Now nine AM and I now declare this meeting open. Manoisa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. And I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nations people in attendance today. And while Manoisa has just turned 100, the Kalkadoons have been looking after this land for 65,000 years, which is fantastic. I just wanted to remind everyone of the recording of council meeting. Please note, this ordinary meeting of Manoisa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in our public gallery, your presence may be recorded and by remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. Before we start with the prayer, I was just going to ask everyone if you could do a minute silence for the three personnel who are assisting Cufus in fire surveillance who lost their lives on the 4th of November 2023. So I'm just going to start that minute silence, please. Thank you, everyone. And I can't tell you how appreciative we are as a community that not just Cufus, but police, council, minds, businesses, individuals united and got together when we had the bushfire. And we will be talking about this a bit later, but we're opening Centennial Place on the 7th of December. And we will be acknowledging all the people who participated in fighting the bushfires in Mount Isa and we'll be inviting everyone to come along and thank all those involved. But I'd like now to start with a prayer and I'd like to thank, is it, is it, what's the title? Is it Reverend or?
Pastor.
Pastor. Pastor Tofu is going to grace us with a prayer. Thank you, Pastor.
I'd like to read a scripture before I pray from the book of Psalms, chapter 65, verses nine to 11. This is about God. You care for the land and water it. You enrich it abundantly. The streams of God are filled with water to provide the people with grain, for so you have obtained it. You drench its farrows and level its reaches. You soften it with showers and bless its crops. You ground the year with your bounty and your carts overflow with abundance. What a God who provides. Let me pray. God of heaven and earth, we are indeed blessed to be here in this city town, doing life together with our leaders and our people who are living here as a whole. We just want to acknowledge your sovereignty and that surpass every other. We bless your name this morning, oh God, because you are worthy of praises and worship. We worship you with adoration and gladness because you love us continually. We thank you so much for this opportunity, dear Lord, that we can come together in support of this town, to pray together and to plan together, to discuss and make up strategies and plans for this town. But we just want to acknowledge your love and protection upon us, Lord, knowing that you had always been there. You had always been there to help us and assist us. Lord heavenly Father, we acknowledge the effort of our leaders, those who are at the front line leading this city. We praise you for their effort. We praise you, Lord, that you have made them capable of what they are doing. What a blessing, Lord, to know that you are indeed leading us. You are the creator, God. We fear you. We give you glory because you are worthy of glory and praises. Lord, we come before you to pray a special prayer for this town. Heavenly Father, may your kind countenance be upon the leaders and be upon the people as a whole. As we continue to do life here, Lord, you know why we are here. You have a purpose for each heart, for each person here who is living here. But at this point, Lord, we come and uplift our leaders to you, that may you may attend to their proposals and their plans. May your plans be yours and may you submit and surrender to your will. Father, we come before you to bless this meeting, this session, Lord, as we continue to do things for this town, Lord. We know that you are always there to bless us. Father, be with us today. Bless this city. Bless the health services, the hospitals and the rest homes. Bless those who are working for the health system of this city. Bless the protective services, Lord, the policemen, firefighters and those who are in charge of the protection and care of this city. I pray that you bless the system as well. I pray the education system, Lord, that you bless our children. And also, Lord, I pray for the economy and the finance and the businesses of this city, Lord. I pray and uplift them to your throne, that you may be in charge and take charge of everything that we do. Father, we ask for your forgiveness for we are imperfect. Please cleanse us with the blood of Jesus. We thank you so much, dear Lord, for you are caring for those who are in need. You are using us also as agents to those that need help and are oppressed. Father, may your hand be upon them, Lord. Help the poor, help the oppressed and help us all to humble ourselves and submit to you, to your will for this town. Thank you very much, dear Lord, for today and thank you for listening to our prayers. We pray all this in the powerful name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tofu. I really appreciate that prayer and I guess we've, you know, lost all those three lives during, you know, that were here to assist us in the northwest. I think that's a very appropriate prayer. So thank you so much for that. So that now takes us to item three, which is apologies and leave an absence. And we have everybody here and the deputy mayor, good to see you from Africa. And I hear congratulations is in order. Can't hear you. You're just on mute. Yeah, the deputy mayor just became a new dad. So congratulations. It's always wonderful to have a new life in the world. So fantastic and really, really lovely news. Congratulations. Well, that takes us to what everybody's been waiting for, which is public participation. And I have a couple of things to do. One is community grants and the other is the Sports Star finalists presentation. So I'm going to start with the community grants first off and then we'll go to the Sports Star finalists. And we all know this works. Okay, so with the Manoisa community grants, I just want to congratulate everybody who was successful in getting a grant. This is the best part of being a councillor is actually being able to hand out some checks. So everyone here would be enjoying this moment because it's lovely to do something nice for the community and really help sports and nonprofits. So we'll start off, our first recipient, and what I'm going to do, sorry, is once you come up here, I'm just going to hand the microphone over to you just so you can talk about what you're going to use the grant for. So the first recipient is Barclay Highway State School PNC. This is a grant for $2,500. It's for the IBC wicking garden beds. The project is for the development of pod garden beds for educational purposes and food cultivation. Do we have anyone from Barclay here? Yep, come through, come on, no hiding. Congratulations, congratulations. There you go.
Whoa, that's really loud. Awesome. Barclay Highway State School PNC would like to thank Manoisa City Council for their support of this. This is a project that we started and we ran out of money to finish it. So this has been a great blessing for us. We have 12 IBCs that we've created wicking beds. So they are garden beds that essentially self-water themselves. So in Mount Isa, it's a case of stopping watering from the top. We water from the bottom so there's less evaporation. Every classroom will have their own garden bed that they look after. They have planted all different things in there already. So we have eight working at the moment. And so we have corn, we have flowers, we have grapes, we have pumpkins. Yeah, so we have a whole bunch of produce that we're producing. Some of it will be used in our breakfast program that we do. And then some of it will also be able to be sold back to our parents and make money for the classrooms that are producing it. So it's pretty exciting. The kids love doing it and they draw all over the garden beds to tell us what they're building and use it for maths and English and everything.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations. So our next recipient is Estelle Cardiff Community Kindergarten. Is Sam here? Hi, Sam. So they've got a grant for $5,000. This is for a new fence and the project is for the installation of a new trim deck and Hercules fence around the kindergarten, which is awesome.
Hi, I'm Sam from Estelle Cardiff Kindy. Just like to say thank you to Manoisa City Council. We are building a new fence just to come up to Australian standards. So thank you so much for this.
Thank you. And we all know how important childcare is in Manoisa at the moment. So yes, delighted we can assist. So the next grant goes to Football Queensland and see Callum here. They've got a grant for $5,000 and it's for a new PA system. And the project is for installation of a new PA system for the Manoisa football park. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
There we go. Get a photo.
Thank you. All righty, good morning, everyone. Yeah, as Danielle was saying, I'm Callum from Football Queensland. This, on behalf of myself and FQ, we'd just like to thank Manoisa City Council for their support to local sport once again. This has been our second for the year, which is great. So this PA system is going to be utilized on match days and also for other school sporting events that are held at the venue. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I've been playing soccer for 30 years, so it's good to see our sports still, still there. All right, which is, our next one is, the recipient is the Manoisa Pistol Club. Have we got Greg here? Yes, we have, yeah. And the amount is $5,000 and this is to install target transport system. The project is to the installation of an automatic target transport system. Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this. These grants are priceless for our club. This auto return system, it's one of only a couple you can get. So this particular one's coming from Germany. We ordered it last week, so this will keep our club inclusive, great for beginners. Yeah, and just the ongoing maintenance of our club. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. And our last final recipient is Manoisa Clay Target Club. We've got Mike here and Mick, not Mike, Mick, sorry, Mick. And it's $4,806, so very rounded off. And it's to construct a trap house thrower. The project is to construct a cover for the trap thrower. So you're going to have to explain that one. But also a little bit about the target, the clay target club, because there's probably a lot of people don't even realise that you're here. So congratulations, Mick. Oh, photo, sorry.
Right, so Manoisa Clay Targets Club, it still does exist here in Mount Isa. We haven't had a club for some, or some grounds for some time. With a lot of hard work from the water board and the council, we've actually plotted a bit of ground out near the lake. And this is to get us started and try and get some cementing done, build the trap house. Trap house is what, is where our clay thrower actually sits. And yeah, so this will actually go a long way to get us started. We actually have actually broken ground for the first time this year. So there's a fair bit of work still to happen and this is going to go a long way towards it.
Thank you. That seems great. And as a council, we know exactly how important our sports are in Manoisa and the versatility of them because, you know, livability is what keeps us all here. But that now brings us to the, so the end of our grants, but it now brings us to the 2023 Sports Star finalists presentations. Now, I believe we had two councils involved in this, councillor Stretton and councillor McCrae, is that right? Yeah, so I don't know if you want to come up and... Oh, traffic. Councillor McCrae, I might get you to talk about the Sports Star awards because I think that we always assume everyone knows what it's about, but it's not always.
Okay, I guess Sports Stars awards are put on by the North Queensland Sports Foundation. They're held annually and they're to recognise people in our community that are doing a great job with lots of different categories and also volunteers and referees and things like that. So congratulations to everyone that was nominated.
Thank you. So we, without further ado, the recipient for the junior finalist, for the rural and remote junior finalist is Selena Hilton. Sienna Hilton? Sorry, Sienna. Well done. Congratulations. I'm going to give you the microphone in a second, okay? All right, here you go. Can you tell, can you tell us a little bit about what you've done to, you know, it'd be lovely?
So athletics. I do athletics and netball. I mostly travel around with mum and dad to compete for athletics, Northwest, ANQ and yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulate mum and dad. Good on mum and dad, hey? Well done. And we have another junior finalist, which for the rural and remote junior, and that's Luca Bukari. And yes, Luca, I'm putting you on the spot too. It happens to me all the time. Congratulations. You can tell us a bit about what you do and sport?
I'm Luca Bukari and I do swimming and I go travel around and compete.
So what level or what title did you win to get nominated?
I've been to nationals earlier this year.
Wow. Are you short or long?
I'm short, no, long course, but I'm more of a sprinter than long distance.
So what's your, what's your strike?
More 50 metre freestyle and butterfly.
Okay, so we might see you in the Olympics then, hey?
Maybe.
We've got a 50, is it 50 metre pool we've got?
Yeah.
Okay, well, all right then. We've got an Olympic, you know, who knows? Hey, if you get into nationals at the moment, that's fantastic. Well, congratulations, Luca. And we hope to see more of you. Thank you. And so this one here is, the next recipient is for the service to sport finalist and it's to Glenn Griffin. Hey, Glenn. Congratulations. Get a photo and another chap.
Thank you. My name's Glenn Griffin. I've been sort of involved with sport with my son for the last six, seven years with the, in soccer, skiing, indoor soccer, outdoor soccer, water skiing. I've got coaching in both water skiing and I've done in soccer as well. But just being recognised for what you've done over the years is, you get quite chuffed. But a lot of people think that you do it, sorry, you don't do it because you think you're going to get thanks from it, you do it because you want to do it. And if you like to do what you do, just keep on doing it because you won't get many thanks from many people. But when you do, you greatly appreciate it. So thank you for the award.
Thanks, Glenn. There's never a true word and I think that we've got a lot of people in the community who give up their own personal time to coach, mentor and, you know, help out in committees. And it's a lot of the time, it's under the radar. So it is nice to be acknowledged and thanked at times. So well done. So that brings us now to the service to sport finalist again, and this is Pauline Burns. Congratulations. Congratulations, Pauline. I'll just get a photo. It's okay, we're all friends here.
To be honest, I'm not sure why I even got this award, but there is many more people who volunteer with netball who deserve this and deserve recognition for the hard work that they do. The kids, it's all about the kids. And over the last few years, it's really grown down there and they really do a hard working job, as well as the volunteers who don't even get any acknowledgement. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. And that's probably why you got the award, because you're very humble with that as well, you know? Okay, so we come to the last recipient and this is for volunteer finalist. And this is, and I'm, I need to put my glasses on, sorry. I was trying very hard not to. Malaya, Malaya, is that right? Come forward. Ratava. Malaya Ratava. Now, can I just, we'll get a photo, but I... And I'm going to give you the microphone, but it is amazing to see someone who's at primary school getting the volunteer finalist, you know, when you've got so much more happening and you're volunteering. Do you want to tell us about what you've been volunteering and what you've been doing? And there's no pressure, we're all friends here.
I'm, I've got, I'm the youngest Queenslander in, in Sebadge in Queensland and I volunteer for umpiring for netball and I umpire people from eight to maybe 48 or maybe over. And I like umpiring just for fitness and to learn more rules and have fun.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And that concludes our present... Oh, come on then, yes. And... Yes. So, yes, and we've left him till last come through. So this one comes to the masters finalist and it's for Sunny Ratava. I've got that right? That's great. And I'm going to make you talk again, so you're going to have to talk about what your dad has, and you probably can say it a lot better than he would anyway. So I'm going to hand over to you.
He, he got belts, boxing master, heavyweight belt, something like that. And he, yeah, he, he boxes for, yeah, he, he boxes and for...
Is he good though?
Um, yeah, I can say he's decent.
He's good more than this.
Oh, yeah, I guess more than decent. Yeah, but yeah, he, yeah, yeah, he, he trains maybe like every day. Maybe we might go out and train with him. And yeah, yeah.
Yeah, oh, well, congratulate him for mass. That's wonderful. Absolutely. I'll just hand it over to councillor McCrae.
Yeah, congratulations to Sunny. He has been at the Sports Star Awards for the last three or four years. He's a common face there. And I think our volunteers have discovered something that all of us here at council know. The more you put into your community, the more you get out of it. So congratulations to those volunteers. For the people that get to the awards, it is a long way for us to travel every year and it is quite expensive to go to the Sports Star Awards. So we have a motion coming up later in the meeting today to try and get those here to Mount Isa next year. So that would be fantastic if we could put on a big event here next year. So let's hope that gets up. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We're going to continue on with the meeting, so if anyone does want to sneak out, probably now's the time. And Peter, I haven't forgotten you, so you're up next, okay? So thanks, everyone, really appreciate. Did you want a great photo or no? Nice, fine. All right then, thanks, everyone. Really appreciate everyone coming. Okay, so we've just got, still in public participation, we've got Peter Bolger, who didn't get a chance to put in an application, but we're happy to hear from him. So just get you a microphone, Peter. And Stephen, you might need a microphone too.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to address you today. Mainly why I didn't put a notice in, because there was no notice of the council, although all these people knew about it. But first of all, I'd like to know why, as Mount Isa is a pathetic town that hasn't got a newspaper even, this is very informative, brought out by the council. And I found, realised that for the last three weeks or four weeks, they haven't brought out a new one. And I'm wondering why haven't they got a standby plan when someone is away on holidays or something like that? Because it did carry local news, which was good, about meetings and all the rest and what's happening. And that's, they've finished in October the 27th, long time overdue. Just wondering...
They sort of, they come out the end of every month, so we've got one coming out on Friday. So that'll be, yeah, is it every two weeks, is it? So we have missed one? Oh yeah, so we've got, sorry, we have missed one. And the next one is coming out on Friday. So yes, but I agree, the newsletter is just so handy and I know a lot of people rely on the newsletter. It helps us get our message out there. So we, like everybody else, you know, often don't have enough staff. And if people are away, it's, we've all just got to make the best of it. Well, when I say we, the council. So it's something I think a lot of businesses are struggling with at the moment, but we are endeavouring to make sure the next one is packed full of information.
Excellent. Well, I hope the council have a standby plan for if someone is away or anything, because, you know, it does carry a lot of local interesting news.
Absolutely. And we've got...
And congratulate the council for doing it, but we've missed our money issue, which is a sad thing.
And we do have, we have just recently employed someone who will be a backup, but it was just, the timing wasn't there. So unfortunate for that.
Like all I hear is, we haven't got the staff, we can't do this, we can't do that. In Cairns and in Isfale, wherever I'm speaking to, about these reserves. The one in Isabel, on the corner of Spence Street, Isabel and Enid Street. Because there's a concrete pavement, they say that is council's responsibility. But the one in Kakota Road is classed as, the one in Rebecca Street is classed as a reserve. Whereas in Kakota Road, it's classed as state land, not a reserve, it's state land. And I keep, last, last year after a lot of complaints, the Department of Environment and Science in Cairns, they arranged to be, it to be cut down. Now it's two metres high, it's a fire hazard, it will be a drainage hazard if we have more rain, everything will grow another two metres. Everyone's trying to rub their hands in the clear of it. Mount Isa, Cairns Department of Environment and Science says it's Mount Isa City Council because there's concrete infrastructure, drainage underground. I said, there is no drainage there, it's dirt. And it's, so I'm fighting with them. But then, as I said last time, nine months ago, someone, they cut it down. Now it's been transferred to the Department of Resources. And it's their responsibility, either those, the two departments. But whatever responsibility finally I make them take, because I'm putting a lot of pressure on them. But Mount Isa City Council should be getting this government direct money from the state government to look after these state land, not money going to Cairns, which is all, all they're interested in is the Barrier Reef. Mount Isa Resources, Department of Resources. It's a bit hard, no one really knows what's going on there. It's in the belt, it's still going on with them. But Mount Isa City Council should be getting this money direct from the state government to look after these. At present, it's, makes me so annoyed, it's getting, going to the Environment Department in Cairns. And it's just getting spent on their, their pet things, which is the Barrier Reef. And Mount Isa's got to put pressure on the state government to get this money that those... I asked to get a copy of the, the Environment Department's budget. Oh no, that's not available. So I'm fighting that because I want to see a printout of what their money, they're getting. I believe they got about 200 million to look after the Barrier Reef. But why is Mount Isa under Cairns? It's just ridiculous. So I'm pushing, the Mount Isa City Council's got to fight for this funds that at present, their Environment and Science Department in Cairns is getting. And I don't know about Department of Resources, if they're getting any money, but...
Have you seen Robbie about this?
Yeah, well, I went to, I said, I want, can I get the, their budget, the Environmental and Science Department, their budget? I said, it's not available. Well, I can't believe that it's not available. So I keep pushing for them, because I think that's important, although I won't probably say itemise that item. But I know they're getting money to look after the reserves because I did it nine months ago. I think they actually sent a contractor from Cairns to do it. I didn't know, ask any local. There was this individual doing it. I said, so I went over to ask him, I said, how come Mount Isa City Council's trucks and everything aren't there? And he said, I've been engaged by Environment and Science to do it. And he wasn't local, I've never seen him, but I made a mistake of not asking where he came from.
Because we've got local people here that are engaged.
Yeah, well, I said, I've got a committee, we can, we can put a price in and do it. But everyone keeps saying, we can't get staff. You know, well, that's a lot of excuse. We're all getting the money from the state government. Mount Isa City Council should be getting this money in their budget.
Absolutely.
Stipulated, it is state land that easement in Kakota Road.
Pete, would you mind if we hand it over to Stephen because he's been working on this and see if he can give us an update?
What was that in?
Stephen Jordan, so he's going to give us an update.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
But Mount Isa City Council should be getting these funds, not Cairns, which is very annoying for me because Mount Isa and City Council needs them.
Thank you, Peter. I think that's a really good point.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think at the previous meeting, we discussed this and we agreed that we prepare an estimate of the cost to do this and approach the department to say, if you pay us directly, we will do it. We also discussed a five-year handover period because obviously, we, we don't want to be going through this forever and we wind up as the backstop in doing it anyway. So we thought perhaps if we offered them a way out, I know it's an impost on council's budget, but we did talk about a five-year sort of runoff period where we might get the funds in the interim, which solves that. But then in five years' time, it would be council's responsibility. It's kind of, it reverts to council's responsibility inevitably anyway, because we go and clean it up when, when nothing's done and things get bad. So we just get in a bit earlier, clean it up and hopefully get some payment in the interim.
Can I just, can I, sorry Pete, can I just intervene here? So obviously this has been ongoing now for 12 months, so we need to...
Yeah, probably at least two years, perhaps three.
Yeah, look, it's been ongoing for a long time. And in the meantime, we've got overgrown areas that can harbour snakes, mice, rats. And we've just had a fire. All surrounding Mount Isa and these places here, they're right next to houses. So I think I've made this offer before, but I'm happy to write to the minister's office and, but we need to get this sorted. And it's not good enough that they, they keep delaying, making decisions. We live here and if they can't make a decision, then maybe Peter's right. We need to come under another department that can make a decision. But it can't take two years to make a decision, you know? And it shouldn't take a resident trying to ring around to see why this isn't done, you know? So we really, and I know this is not on you, Stephen, but it's just, I'm happy to ring up or write to whoever we need to, but we need to get this done. I think we do it, we send them a bill. And then I, I know we want to try and get them to agree to pay the bill before we do it, but look how long this has been going, you know? And so no, we're all frustrated, Peter. It is frustrating and it's not good enough that it's...
I wouldn't disagree, you shouldn't have to do it and then ask for money. They've got to give you the money.
Yeah, and look, absolutely. And it's, it's, Mount Isa City Council wants to do it, but there's some red tape there. So we pretty much, we need to either hold them to, we need to announce by a certain date, because then we'll get the mayor to write letters and start ringing around. Because the last thing we want is a house to get caught, catch on fire due to a fire in one of these areas, which is very overgrown and to me is, you know, not great. So, so thank you, Peter. Thanks for coming in and making your point. It's good to see that the citizens out there that really care about Mount Isa. And we always take any, any feedback on the chin and try and fix things. Because if we don't know, we can't fix it, but we know this one. This is one that's, I think it's the, it's been a tough one for a while now. And I think we're all here just as frustrated as you are. Yeah, absolutely. And I think you might be talking to the different people to who Stephen's talking to, because Stephen seems to think he's got a bit of traction now. So let's see where we, but if we can get that traced up sooner than later, that'd be great. Yeah, so you're not here at the next council meeting. Thanks, Peter. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us now to item five, which is the confirmation of previous minutes, previous meeting minutes. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move the recommendation through chair that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 25th of October 2023 be confirmed as true and correct record.
Thank you councillor. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Tully. Any, anything on this one? Any comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. That then takes us to item six, which is the actions from previous council, council meetings. And 6.1, which is the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the 17th of November 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Through the chair, I'll move that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from the previous council meetings as of 17th November 2023.
Can I get a second for that motion, please? Thank you councillor Tully. Any comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That makes us at item seven, which is the declarations of conflicts of interest. Do any councillors in attendance have any conflicts of interest with the agenda that they are aware of?
No.
No.
No, thank you. And that takes us to the mayoral minute. I just want to highlight some of the council events that are coming up. And on the 2nd of December, which is a Saturday, we have our Christmas in the City, which we host every year. And again, we're hoping that'll be a big event and you'll have an option of either going inside or outside. And it should be a great family event. On the 5th of December, we have our seniors high tea. And this year we're hosting two options of 9:30 AM and 1:00 PM. And if you know of a senior who's over 60 and may not know about this, please pass it on. Or we'd love to see all the seniors attend. On the 7th of December, which is a Thursday, after 5:00 PM, I think it's 5:30 PM, we will be officially opening Centennial Place. And as part of that launch, we will be just recognising and thanking everyone, including QFES, police, emergency services personnel, members of the public, businesses, industry, united through the bushfires that surrounded Mount Isa last month. So that'll be a great opportunity to come together as a community. And at the moment, this is pencilled in, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be locked in. On the Friday, the 8th of December, Mount Isa City Council will be coming out to Camerewell to celebrate Christmas with the community and in particularly the children. So that, that'll, these events are always fantastic this time of year. And I also just want to acknowledge that next year, we have council elections on the 16th of March. And if anyone is interested in running for council, there will be courses online or will we be putting on our website? I think there will be some opportunities for people to physically go in person. And I recommend if you're a brand new councillor, maybe going in person as well as if you want to do it online. And it is a really good opportunity to do something for your community, be a voice for your community and actually, you know, make a massive contribution to your community. So if there are people out there who have been thinking about being a councillor, this is the time to have a think about it, because once the council's elected, it's four years before the next council elections. And if you get on the electoral site, it'll actually give you all the information you need, what makes you eligible to be a councillor, if you have any concerns. And if you can't find it there, if you ring up the electoral commission, they are very friendly and helpful. And if they can't help you at the time, they will get back to you. And yeah, I just, you know, I think the main criteria is you just have to live in the local government area to be eligible to be a councillor. But other than that, there's probably just a few little tiny things you might have to check. If you have a, a police record or a few things like that, just... But basically, I'm encouraging everyone out there to throw your hat into the ring and become a councillor, because it is a great way to support your community. Okay, so that takes us now to item nine, which is reading and consideration of correspondence, which is nil. And then that takes us to item 10, which is a nation, a notice, a notice of motion from the mayor councillor Danielle Slade, which is... It basically says, I councillor Danielle Slade, give notice that the next ordinary meeting of council will be held on the 22nd of November and I intend to move the following motion. And the motion is that Mount Isa City Council trial using existing data, giving Mount Isa ratepayers who own residential dwellings, residential flats and multi-self-contained residential units the opportunity to use a two-part tariff or elect to use an allocation tariff from the 1st of July 2024 to the 31st of December 2025, with a view, with a full review conducted after the 1st of July 2025. And that Mount Isa City Council rescind resolution OM030923, that council investigate providing options for water charging and allocations in the form of a report to council when 12 months' full data from smart meters are complete. Exploring the following options, one, existing two-part tariff versus a 900 kiloliter allocation option. An option to pre-purchase additional water allocation, and this would be a... and this would be a choice of a further amount of kiloliters or allocations at the cost determined by council. Would anyone like to second that motion? And that brings that motion, um, from lack of a second, uh, to...
Sorry, I was, uh, I'll second that motion to, um, have a discussion.
All right, thank you, councillor Fortune. And, um, I'll, I'll just give you some background on this one, because you're probably wondering why this one has come up again. Certainly. And, uh, so the actual wording is not, it, it's just actually a little bit out, and it's, you know, um... So what I'm worried about is it actually says versus, not, um, one or the other. So to me, if, um, none of us are here next year, which is a very good chance, um, they could actually look at a two-part tariff or just offering a, an allocation, which is not what I want. It, it's giving people a choice of selecting a two-part tariff or they can go to an allocation. So it, it's, it's about choice, it's not one or the other. And, uh, to me, it reads like, and this might be to do with the amendment that you guys made, or I can't remember who made it now, but...
I made it.
Thanks, councillor Coghlan. Um, so I don't want it to be, let's go back to an allocation, and I certainly don't want it to be just stuck in a two-part tariff, which is how it reads. And that, that, I'm not sure if that's on you or me with that, um, amendment. Um, but it, it really needs to be that they can vote for having a two-part tariff, staying as they are, or they can opt to take a, a, um, an allocation. So that's, that's what I want, is people to have a choice, but not only have one option, which is how it reads at the moment, which is, um, I'm not comfortable with how it reads. And in fact, it actually reads completely different to how, um, the motion I'm putting up. And, uh, but it just to, just because we've got that motion in play and they do look similar, um, Tim advised me that the best thing would be to rescind the, the amendment and then put the other one up. So that's what I've done, on advice.
So this was Tim's idea to bring this back to council?
No, 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 wait, hang on, hang on, sorry. No, it was my idea to, so councillor, um, I'll repeat it again if you like. So I was not comfortable with the wording of the amendment from councillor Co- Kim Coghlan, and I, again, I don't know if this is your wording or if it was just a mistake somewhere made in that, so I'm not blaming you, but the wording is not, um, offering people a choice on how to stay on one or go to another. The wording actually means that we're going to offer the community either a two-part tariff or we'll just completely change it to offering them an allocation, which is not what I want. I want a, um, definitely want people to have a choice in how they, um, pay for water. I went to Tim and said, "Look, I'm not comfortable with that motion. It, there's a good chance, you know, there's a new election, there's a few councillors not running again, and there's a few councillors running for mayor, which means that there could be very few of us in the room when this actually does come to council, and it doesn't read well at all." So that's why I said to Tim, "I'm, I want to put this motion up", and that was his advice to, um, rescind the, the other one, because they were very similar. Does that make sense, councillor McCrae?
Um, yes, it does. I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm just wondering why we want to rush into this now and not use data to properly inform our decision as we initially discussed. That's question one. And question two, why are we still talking about this now and not talking about North West Water? Um, I think you're on the steering committee for North West Water. If you could give us an update on that, because I think that's a far more appropriate conversation to be having.
Okay, so your first question is, um, sorry, what was your first question again? It was...
Um, why aren't we just happy to wait and use data to, um, help us make an informed decision?
So, so I had a, I had an opportunity to have a chat to Stephen Jewell, because he wasn't here previously. Yep, Stephen Jewell. And, um, so I, I asked him, um, how important is this data? Is it, is it important enough that we could, we do need to wait a year? And is, does it mean that we could actually lose income as a council? Because obviously, we, we have to make enough money to pay, uh, pay for water. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, Stephen, so I may be putting words in your mouth here, but it was more the fact that, you know, we as a council don't want to make a huge profit on water or a profit on water. We just want to be able to, um, invoice enough to cover the water charges. Now, as we all know, that we lose 36% of our water down the creek. So we, so basically, we pay $10 million for water. 3.6% of that, so $3,600,000 is water that actually doesn't make it to a tap. With the, with the dat- smart meters coming online, there's an opportunity here to, um, correct some of that. And, and we knew that, um, some residents weren't doing the right thing, and they were bypassing their meters. So I think there was a, quite a high percentage of that, you know, I think it was 4%, 5%, which is, is, which is quite high.
4% to 5% of people were bypassing the meter?
Yes. And, uh, the other thing was that these smart meters will alert people a lot quicker that they have a, uh, a leak. So we won't, a- and as you know, we try and work with residents who have large leaks, because we can't give them a $10,000 water bill when they, they may not have been alerted to the leak until, you know, months later by, by extra green grass popping up out of the blue. So these smart meters have the capacity to, um, you know, alert us if, uh, they're not working, and they also alert us if there is leaks. So we envisage, I guess, that we will actually probably take more income, um, from, um, because of the smarter meters, because we won't be losing that $3.6 million down the creek. And we don't, we won't know if we recover $600,000, $1 million, $2 million, $3 million. We just won't know until the end, but what, what we do know is that as a council, we won't lose income. So that's the, that's, that's the first question. The other one with North West Water is I've had a discussion with Sunwater, and I've also had a discussion with, uh, the Manauiza Water Board, and I've had a discussion with Minister Glenn Butcher. And, uh, I've also been talking to Greg Campbell, who's the mayor. And what the, um, Glenn Butcher has, has, uh, wh- what we've actually put to the Glenn Butcher is that they do a complete review on Lake Julius, Lake Mundara, and our capacity as councils, as Manauiza City Council and Concuri Council, to be able, if, if we so, uh, if they went down the road of North West Water, where we got to take control of the both assets, that we had capacity as two councils and a board to take them on. And why I definitely think that we, we certainly do, um, I think this is a really rational step to take, so we can show, just like you want data for water meters, we can show the state government that we do have the capacity to be able to manage our two, uh, lakes. So that's where we're up to at this moment wi- with that. And I do know it's one of your campaign elections, so I think that's great that you're going to run with that, because it's, it's...
Um, no, I haven't actually come out and said that. I mean, I, I will, but I haven't said it, so I don't know where you got that one from.
Uh, it's on your Facebook page, I think.
No, I don't think it is.
Where have I read it, then?
Through the chair.
Anyway, doesn't matter. Um, yes, councillor Fortune?
I seconded this motion to have, um, discussion and, and debate around it. Um, we've already had a, a motion there that, uh, this motion is asking to rescind. I, I disagree with that, uh, because, uh, you know, we asked for, for the 12 months' full data, and I don't believe there is enough data there. There's enough, uh, we haven't been through our hottest and highest usage for Manauiza with the smart meters, with the majority of them in. So there's no way we can, um, accurately predict with that, uh, data that we will get from the smart meters, uh, what a water usage will be. Um, I've got every faith in, uh, whatever council comes into, uh, being next year, that they will have the best interests of our Manauiza community at heart, and they will look at every opportunity and every option of, of giving our ratepayers the, um, information, uh, and also options that they, uh, will, will be fair to the community. Um, you know, another thing I have not seen is the actual cost to council in terms of administration of the, of the various options as well. So, um, with the, uh, data over 12 months and a bit more delving, I guess, into what it will actually cost council to administer the, the, uh, options, um, I don't believe that there's any, uh, level of due diligence being done in that area. So, uh, as a council, I can't accept that. Um, the other thing is, uh, with the profits that, um, Manauiza City Council get from the, um, sale of water, uh, that goes back into, uh, our, our revenue, um, and into the ad, uh, you know, administration, but also the maintenance of our infrastructure, our water infrastructure, our water and sewer infrastructure. So that, um, that money, uh, although, yes, it is a profit, that's put back into our infrastructure, which is, um, vital to the, uh, ongoing, uh, no, benefit of the city. Uh, with, without that maintenance, without that replacement of our water infrastructure with the money that we get from our water, um, you know, the system breaks down. So, um, you know, it, it doesn't make sense to me that, um, uh, that money that council gets isn't put back into the infrastructure. So, uh, the, uh, you know, the due diligence all round, I, I think, um, in this motion hasn't been, uh, fully, uh, taken into account, and that's why I will be voting against the motion.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. And I think, you know, it, um, while you say the next council may want to do this, um, this council certainly doesn't and didn't, you know? And if it's not for me harping on about it, you know, it wouldn't be in any of our meetings. And I certainly, you know, when I did bring it up, you know, I got accused of grandstanding and, uh, and, uh, trying to commit to election promise, which I really want to say to the councillors that, you know, whoever gets elected, elected in, you should look at their election promises, because that's what the community want. So as much as you may not think, "Oh, that's not something I really want to do", that person may have got voted in because that's what the community want. And at the end of the day, we're the voice of the community. And we have other councils in Queensland that of, currently offer a choice and, and certainly don't lose money. So that's just my opinion. Um, any other councillors want to speak on this one?
That's not right. I, I mean, you know, a pricing should align with the supply of water, the operating cost, capital expenditure, um, with the return of capital, which funds its depreciation, and the return of investment. So, I, I mean, all that, you know, these rationals that, I'm, I'm not too sure who's come up with them, but, I mean, it's not answering any questions whatsoever. Um, and as far as politicians or political people making promises that they don't deliver, I mean, wow, that's never happened before.
Look, it's a democracy, and I understand that I may have, uh, a vision for Manauiza that doesn't align with other councillors' vision, and that's just what democracy's about, right? I'm, I'm entitled to put my vision up, and you're entitled to vote how you want to. And, and that should be encouraged, not discouraged. That's all I'm saying. And, and with the, with your point about cost, we're one of the highest councils in Queensland to charge for water. So we should be looking for ways to make sure that we're not profiteering on a basic human right of water. So that's a concern, and there are other ways to make income. And in fact, we are, we charge the lowest amount of rates from our neighbours for mines, you know? And these are things we should be looking at in the future. In fact, we're two or three times lower than some of our neighbours when charging rates to mines, and some of these mines are packing up, you know?
How many councils in Queensland have the two tariffs?
Council has the two tariffs, the Whitsundays have the two tariffs, but I, I believe they're all around Australia. So do you want me to get your list?
Oh, I've got it.
Okay, great, yeah. Any other questions, councillors, before we vote? All right, all those in favour? Oh, yep, sorry, sorry, I didn't, forgot about you, councillor. I forgot about you, sorry.
You know, 12 months' data, um... This is only a microscopic view of the issues with the water. As councillor McCrae's pointed out, you know, there's a whole North West Water Authority, um, you know, and I, I would encourage a new council to do a full review on, on the water, um, and from the, from the, from the get-go, from the assets that we have in the countryside, and also how we distribute the water and how we sell the water. Um, but I, this, this motion today, I think is, is, I think it's, um, it's not as considerate as even the previous motion in September, and, and I aired my views then, that, uh, we need to wait for the data, so that we can be well informed and we didn't mess up anything with the ratepayers. If we, we start a trial now, it's going to cross over the election, and it's going to be lumbered on the new council, and I don't think that's, that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor, and, uh, I think you brought up a point that I've already addressed, and that is that we have lobbied the minister Glenn Butcher as, as Manauiza City Council, Concuri Council, um, to do a full review, so for the options for North West Water. So that's already happening. So that, you can rest easy, that part's already happening. Thank you. All right. Um, let's vote. All those in favour? Um, against... Can we have a division there, please? That now takes us to the annual report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Um, 11.1.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Yep, thank you.
The council resolves to adopt the annual report for the period 1 July 2022 to 30 June 2023 for the Manauiza City Council in accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act 2009 and associated regulations, and to delegate authority to the chief executive officer in accordance with the Local Government Act 2009 to make minor administrative amendments and finalize all matters associated with publishing this report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor McCrae. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this report?
Uh, no, I'm on, thank you.
Any discussion on this report? Uh, the only one I would mention is that, um, just with the complaints, admin complaints, I'm, I'm, I'm a bit worried that we haven't captured them all, because I know of the, uh, there was a couple of complaints against a public official that never came to council or councillors, and I just don't know if they've been recorded. So I don't know how we follow that up. I think they're in this one. They're, they're for the end of October. What was it, September, October?
What, what is it?
Just, there was a few complaints that, well, one I definitely know of, that didn't come to council against a public official, and, uh, I don't know who recorded it. I don't know if it was recorded, and I certainly don't know who looked after it. That's just a complaint that, that happened, but we were not informed as a council, and we don't, I don't know who looked after the complaint. So that's something that I just want to check that we've got the right amount of administrative complaints in, in the, um, in that annual report.
So you're saying there should be more than 88 complaints?
These are councillor complaint, not councillor complaints, these are staff complaints. So what I'm saying is that I know of one that I don't think has been recorded, and, and possibly more. So that's something we may have to look at when our governance advisor comes back.
Not through the chair. I think between the CEO and the governance advisor in the department, um, they should be able to find those figures. I mean, I'm reasonably sure, looking at those figures, that everything was covered, but, oh, again, I don't know everything about, uh, what complaints were made and when, um, but I think...
Yeah, and, and...
Between the CEO and the governance, um, advisor, we should be able to, to nail down those numbers.
We, we've actually changed the complaints against a public official now, so in future, we won't be left out of the loop with that. So it was ambiguous before, I guess, you know, and there was, um, and maybe they didn't feel they had to take it to councillors, but anyway, it's, it's happened, and we just need to look, go forward and make sure we record any, any, um, complaints. Uh, we certainly catch all the council ones, so it, but it has... Uh, we certainly catch all the council ones, so it's, but it has to be the, um, staff as well. So thank you for that one. Any other, any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. The next one takes us to eleven point two, which is the updated policies for adoption. Would someone like to move the, um, count, uh, the officer's recommendation please?
I'd like to move that council adopts the following updated statutory policies. One, standing audit policy version six, two, the model meeting procedures ver- version three, and that council extinguishes the statutory caretaker period policy.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, I'd say we have a number of policies and procedures that all need to be updated regularly and, um, yeah, this is just part of that process. All the track, track, track changes, that's a tongue twister, um, are there in the red, um, for us to follow. Um, I do have a few questions, sorry, about the, um, extinguish of the caretaker period policy. I'm just not hundred percent sure what that one's about.
I'll get Tim to talk on that one because.
Thanks councillor. Um, so basically council had their own caretaker policy, but the caretaker provisions are basically covered by.
Oh, so we don't need it.
The Local Government Acts are superfluous to our needs.
Thank you.
Any other questions councillors?
Yeah, through the chair, can I just ask the CEO? Um, on, um, six, six point two, point three, um, I just need a bit of an explanation on the minutes of a pre, the minutes of a preceding meeting, whether an ordinary or a special meeting not previously concerned will be taken into consideration at every ordinary meeting of the local government and in order that the minutes may be confirmed. No discussion will be permitted about these minutes except with respect to their accuracy as a record of the proceedings. Um, so when it's saying no discussion.
No, what, well, what it's trying to say, and there's a lot of words there, is when you, when you're adopting your minutes, the, the discussion shouldn't be about what happened during the minutes. It should be about is the, are the minutes accurate or not accurate? And it's trying to just make sure that you're focusing on that rather than have an argument about a minute.
Yep.
For proceedings.
Yep. So if something is in the minutes that like has been recorded and we believe it's recorded wrong.
That's right.
We can have a discussion on that.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's saying you can't have a general discussion on everything that's in the minutes.
No, no, no. But if there, if something has been flagged and on that same page, it, it says here, um, business not on the agenda or not fairly arising from the agenda will not be considered at any council meeting unless permission for that purpose is given by the local government at the meeting. Business must be in accordance with the adopted terms of reference for each committee. So at that one, like, um, something mightn't be on the agenda, but it could relate to something on the agenda. Can we ask for reports or like, can we ask for more information?
What it's trying to do is just say you can't just bring stuff up from the floor without a, like, the best practice is to have a report there.
Yep.
And when you've got a report, you move through that, whereas, um, in the, in going back a few years, but councillors used to just raise items from the floor and then they'd think about it later and say, oh, maybe that wasn't such a good idea. So just trying to make, put a bit of rigor around the meeting.
Yep, no, that's, that's a fair call. So with, um, like a notice of a motion, no one can do that from the floor. It has to be given to, two days in advance.
You've got to give notice.
Yep.
So, so then if you want to move a notice of motion, you put it on the agenda, councillors can have a look at it and consider it for two days and then a minimum of two days.
Right, so that applies to everyone, like, yeah, righty-o. Even you as a CEO, if you think something needs to be brought up?
I'd rather not bring it up if I couldn't avoid.
No worries, that's all I needed, thank you.
Unless it's an emergency sort of thing.
Yeah.
And then you get permission off the group to raise it.
Yep. No worries, thank you, thank you for, um, explaining that.
We've had a, we had a situation where we had a, um, a, um, a, a wage increase for a, um, staff member that just popped into a, a gender without any consultation with us as councillors, you know, that, to me, that was an issue, that it just popped into an agenda item to, to give someone a, a raise without any discussion as councillors, no, no, um, heads up it was happening, it's just turned up and, uh, it was put forward by another staff member. So that, those sort of things to me were, you know, not great.
So through the chair, the point of standing orders is to have, um, governance, um, that follows the act around the way we conduct meetings.
Yeah.
What are the consequences? I don't see them in this, uh, paper. What are the consequences for diverging from standing orders?
Uh, well, it's just, it's just an agreed practice between all the councillors. This is how you want to conduct your meetings and then, you know, as part of that too.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand that. I mean, we're all voting on, on this today, that agreed practice, but what if we diverge from that agreed practice? What are the consequences? Because it's, um, something under the act that we're supposed to have.
Yeah.
Aren't there consequences on the act for?
Yeah, well, there's codes of conduct and things like that that you fall, fall back on as well.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, or you can have a complaint made.
But, but we can do something in the meeting too, like if, if as a councillor, I think it's gone off track from what it is, I, I can call it back, can't I?
Yeah, there's procedural motion.
Yeah.
It's just whether or not people listen.
Any other questions councillors?
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, so this is the corporate services reports and twelve point one, which is the finance overview report for October twenty twenty three. Um, deputy mayor, are you comfortable doing this one? Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, deputy mayor, do, would you like to give us an overview?
She's away today councillor.
She's away.
Um, that's okay, she's not here at the moment. And any comments would you like to make or you're fine?
I'd just like to commend the, um, administration team for, um, their efforts in, on isolating the outstanding rates, um, to date. And I think they're putting in a fair effort there and it's, um, it's a good position to be in at the moment. Um, and I note that the, um, the loans are, the outstanding loans are still being paid down and we're getting into quite a healthy position with those, uh, down to under seventeen million now. Thanks very much.
Thank you deputy mayor. Does anyone else want to make a comment about the, um, the report?
Um, my only comment is something I, I raised during the informal briefing is that I would like to see the, and I know we've just got a new system in and that has delayed things, so there's a lot of things that have been outside everyone's control, but I would like to see council go back to our old billing times of, um, I think it was February and August, because, you know, people are just getting their bills now and it's, you know, a month off Christmas. So it'd be nice to, um, go back to those old time, times that we did it for years and years and years. And I think it's only just by accident that we've moved slightly to, you know, March, April and, you know, sort of October, November. So I think if we can go back to those billing terms and initially we could send the bill out in February and give people two months grace because we're trying to pu- push it forward a bit more and have a bit more grace for the first year of trying to get it back earlier. And as much as we all want to be organised, you know, some, when people have got money in the bank, sometimes they use it rather than, you know, for whatever reason.
That's my only comment, all right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that now takes us to the, uh, community services report, the splashes overview report, and I'll hand over to councillor Colquhoun.
Just like to make the recommendation that council receives and accepts the October twenty twenty three splashes overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded fortune.
Thank you. Councillor Colquhoun, would you like to speak on this one?
Yeah, just to let people know, um, we're back to the summer training hours, which is five thirty in the morning till seven P M Saturday and Saturday is seven A M to five thirty P M and Sunday is nine A M to five P M. Um, we've still got the Mount Isa Heat Swim Club, uh, back in action again, as we saw today with our young recipient. And also you've got the Move at N Q sessions that are running, the Aqua Aerobics, uh, swim fit sessions are running. Uh, one thing, um, that's great work from, uh, Brian and the team, we have the inflatables coming again over the Christmas period and they'll be here in Mount Isa from the fourth to the eighth of December for three hours each day. They're going to be located on Cruciate Oval and the fences will be down so that people can, um, come in and use them. And, um, the other thing I did want to ask is, I know the pool sometimes gets unwanted visitors, uh, wanting to use the toilet. Is there any way that we could look at with our, um, major projects or whatever to get a toilet up and running at the actual, uh, skate park? Where all the, the plumbing is, I think it's on, if we could have it somewhere on, near the P C Y C building because all the plumbing is there. I think it's something that we could look at because you've got kids that are there from seven in the morning till late at night. Uh, we've got the water cooler there now. Um, I just think it's something I would like to put on the major projects, just for, you'd have a toilet at the family fun park, uh, the pool would be separate and anyone that uses the skate park would have their own facilities there. If we could do that, that'd be good, that's all.
And, and the, the blow up option that's free for the community?
No, you have to go through splashes to, to get it. So it's through splashes, when you're in splashes, you can go use the inflatables.
Uh, you said that they were going to be on Cruciate Oval?
Yeah, they're on Cruciate Oval, they're taking the fence down in between so that they can, if you're at splashes, you can go through.
Uh, and, and what about the, um, inflatables that we bought for the actual town pool?
These are the big inflatables.
I know, I know what you're talking about, which is for land, but we purchased inflatables for the town pool, didn't we?
Yeah, they can put them up whenever type of thing, they've had to get these ones in.
Yeah, I've realised that, but are, are we going to be using them over the, um?
Shay always does, yeah.
They do use a lot of it.
This is just something different for the kids to use.
I just, I just wonder if we could publicise it and like put it on Facebook that if you come to the pool tomorrow, we've got the, um, inflatables on the pool.
They do do that. When the inflatables are up, they do have to advertise because quite, um, there's about two, I think two of the lanes have to be closed off, like there's no swimming in, in that part. So I know they do do a lot of work with getting it out there, but, um, I just wanted to highlight these ones coming up because they're only going to be here for the five days.
And, and that may be something we can do on our Facebook page then, is promote what's happening at splashes because not everyone's following splashes, but they, a lot of people follow Mount Isa City Council, so maybe we can just promote it. Uh, fantastic. Yeah, and, but no, I'm talking about the actual floaties on the pool, not the ones that, um, Kim's doing.
One's councillor Tully can't stay off.
At least she's stayed on.
That video was the most viewed ever in council history.
Probably second most, but anyway. Um, what about the, so you've just got to pay to go into splashes and then you can go and use all the slides as well? Okay, terrific. Any other comments councillors? All right, all those in favour? Deputy mayor? In favour Phil? Okay, that's carried.
Rumble Stillskin, you awake?
That's all right. Um, so that takes us now to item thirteen point two, which is the economic development overview report. So I'm, I'm assuming this is the deputy mayor?
Twenty three economic development overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Streton.
And, uh, would you like to speak on this one deputy mayor?
Uh, mayor, again, I might hand to the director of community development, um, uh, if he's, tell me he's here, please. To, uh, to represent, thanks sir.
What was that? Oh, sorry, okay Chad.
Through the chair, there's, um, two, I guess, important items that I draw your attention to. Um, one is we had feedback from the state government regarding the growing future tourism fund, which was the funding submission we put in for the expansion of our back at Isa. Um, unfortunately that grant was unsuccessful. Uh, the initial feedback from the department is that they were looking to prioritise new projects over expansions, but we've asked for a detailed debrief, um, from that over, over our submission because it was a fairly comprehensive one. Um, the second piece that I draw your attention to is, I guess, a refocusing of the team's efforts to, um, the response to the Glencore, um, the Glencore announcement. So what you'd normally see in terms of our reports is, I guess, tracking against the economic strategy, what we're doing and what you'll see over coming reports is a real focus on how we're responding to the closure and what next steps are.
Thank you. Any questions for Chad? All right, any, any questions in, in general with, um, the report? Nothing? Okay, and, uh, we'll, we'll, if there's nothing there, we'll vote. Um, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now that takes us to the community development overview report. So this one is councillor McCrae, is that right?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the October twenty twenty three community development overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
And councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yeah, I think you covered off on most of this during the mayoral minute, madam mayor, but I would just like to take the opportunity to thank, um, any staff that were involved in Remembrance Day.
Absolutely, it was very good. And, uh, Christmas in the city, uh, again, is the second of December and we have a line up of Bethany Fisher and dancers, Gareth Lyon, um, Mount Isa City Council Library, which is slash the Wiggles, Mount Isa School of Dance, Emily Watson, Ashley Level, Peter Laffin, John Collins and David Whitehead. So a lot of local talent there. Um, and it's going to, again, always just a wonderful event and a really nice way to kick off the, um, Christmas festivities. And, uh, again, the high tea, it's really, um, I'm, I'm still talking to seniors who don't know anything about it, so, um, we might just keep plugging that away before, um, because we've got two sessions, so we can accommodate a lot of people, so that would be great. And there, it, there will be again a, a movie happening this year, so that's probably more mid-December, which may or may, may miss a few people. And Australia Day Awards are open, so if you know anyone who's been doing anything great in the community, um, now's the time to get the nomination forms. It can take a few, might take a bit of time to fill them out, so, uh, yeah, it's a really good, um, opportunity to recognise those people who perhaps don't, um, always get acknowledged.
Just through the chair, on that point, can we just, um, and I've said it quite a lot, can we just keep making sure that that gets put on our council feed about the Australia Day Awards? And, um, but yeah, just keep, yeah, all the time. And also us as councillors need to be, um, proactive in, in, when we're talking to, yeah, when we're talking to people to get them to nominate because like we've just had all these recipients today, so, and I know everyone's tired because it's the end of the season and all that, but if they do it now, they don't have to worry about doing it at the beginning of the year in a rush.
Through the chair, I'm just very tentative with going out with dates, because I see there's just been a lot of date changes at the moment. I now, I noticed where Camel Wheel was on the same day as the High Teas at one stage. I just, I don't know, things are popping up in my calendar, so I'm trying to organise, and then they're getting changed. I saw we're supposed to have Buchanan Park opening, not Buchanan Park, Centennial Place yesterday, then that got moved, and I think it's been moved again. So it's very tricky to go out and say a date and tell people when we don't even know what we're doing ourselves, and councillors.
Yeah, and, and look, the Camel Wheel wasn't our choice, the date wasn't our choice, so we, we did lock it, we thought we locked it in for the 1st of December, and then we were advised that it really didn't suit, I'm assuming it's a school. And then they picked the Tuesday, which is our seniors' High Tea, which is, really puts, you know, I think there's only, you know...
So those events are still going to be on on the same day?
No.
Oh, we've managed to move, okay.
Yes, we've, yeah, I think they moved it to the 8th of December now, so...
Just trying to juggle.
Yeah, I understand. It's, it's just difficult though, when we, yeah, things keep getting moved.
Oh, absolutely, and I, I agree, but the, it's one of those times of years where everyone's got tonnes of stuff on, and it's, it's a lot of juggling for sure.
Can I just do, through the chair, too, a shout-out for the Mount Isa School of Dance, because they've got their big concert on this weekend, so if anyone's looking for anything to do Saturday night or Sunday lunchtime, it's a really great event.
I'm actually going Sunday, so I can't wait. It's absolutely good.
And can I also just add, Mount Isa is up for the Queensland Tourism Awards for the Street Festival this Saturday night in Cairns as well, for the tourism awards. So, let's hope.
Which year is that? Last year's, or the year before?
The one that's just passed.
Just gone.
Will you be attending?
I am, attending on behalf of council.
Good. Full of it.
Thank you.
Hope you win.
Well, it's "we".
Hey?
I said it's "we".
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The Regional Arts Development Fund councillor, just in regard, deputy mayor, just in regard to the committee, I'm sort of, was, I'm, I'm sort of a bit oblivious to who's on the committee, and I, I heard we had a few changes, is that correct?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, there has been, yeah. We've had Jessie Moores resigned, and Will Blackley's taken up a position.
Okay. And how do we advertise that? Just out of curiosity, more than anything.
Oh, it was just a feel-out through the, through the arts world, really, which has been the way it's been done for a long, long, long time. I mean, happy to change the process if, if we want to go down that road.
All right. No, no, it's just that it came up actually yesterday, and I was like, oh. But anyway, thank you for clarifying that.
No worries, thanks.
And yeah, look, if he's, if the community wants to go and have a look at these reports, you can see that we've got the sign-on expo dates in place and a few other things, so it's always good to have a look at what council's doing. So without further ado, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that now takes us to... The next one, which is 13.4, the adoption of the service level agreement between MIKO and Mount Isa City Council. Would someone like to move the officer's motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council accepts a service level agreement between Mount Isa City Council, MICC, and the Mount Isa Council, City Council-owned enterprises, MIKO, as presented.
Can I get a second for, seconded for that motion, please?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. And deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Good, thanks. The MIKO agreement, SLA, with council has been around. We've been working off a document from 2014, I believe, and it's, you know, it's just one of those loose ends that we needed to tidy up, particularly with the changes of Buchanan Park and Civic Centre moving away from MIKO. So this, as you can understand from 2014, a lot of things have gone out of whack. And I'd like to thank the, the team in council for pulling this together with assistance of legals to get it, it's just one of those loose ends that needs to be tidied up. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any, any questions on this one?
Well, just probably one. I mean, should we be voting on this, like if we're on the board of MIKO or not?
I think you're appointed as a councillor, so I don't...
Yeah, look, I, I think that this needs to happen, because every year I go and do an inspection just before the show, and every year the same problems are still there. So I think council really needs to get, this is our, but, come out to the end of our first year, and I think I can already see an improvement, so I think council really needs to be there, leading the charge for the maintenance. I, I don't think MIKO's equipped in any way, shape, or form to do maintenance, that sort of thing. So I don't know if everyone else... Yeah, but it's, to me, it seems, you know, I, I just noticed when MIKO was looking after the maintenance, it just wasn't happening, or they just didn't have the capacity to do it, whereas now council have taken over. I've seen some changes at Buchanan Park, and we still need more, but still, it's, it's happening. And that means, at Back at Isa previously, were you guys doing it up until now? Is that what's happening? Because we would have taken over the Civic Centre and Buchanan Park at October last year, wouldn't we? Is that right?
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't quite catch all that.
Oh, sorry. So up at, on, when we took over in October, I think it was, did we start the maintenance on the Civic Centre and Buchanan Park? Did we start, or were you guys...
Yeah, that's my understanding. I mean, there was always a, a level of commitment by council to do a lot of that maintenance, and on both of those facilities, and our Back at Isa anyway. However, over time, the wheels fell off, as to who was responsible and who wasn't at certain times, which led to some of the confusion in, in previous years, yeah. So council still has significant responsibilities in terms of the level of particularly large, large pieces of maintenance to be done in those centres. The MIKO budgets are just designed to be an operational budget, to do light maintenance, and to, you know, to keep things ticking over. However, large items, large aspects of maintenance still need to be conducted under capital works.
Okay. Through the chair, in relation to that, I did have a question. I went looking to see if I could find budget in there. With, has the budget been adjusted, seeing there's not the Civic Centre and Buchanan Park there? Like, are you still getting the same amount of money with less facilities?
No, it's been, it's been adjusted, yeah.
Thank you.
There is a change over years. Part of the year was, we still had the three facilities, and part of the year we didn't. So it was adjusted down.
Yes, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, so pretty much this, it's the next financial year that we're currently in, we'll have the true figures for MIKO, to be honest, is that...
Well, that'll be, yeah, we have the true figures now, but, you know, because they're separated well enough, and clearly we were able to, to, to show the costs of Buchanan Park and Civic Centre as well. So that, that's been shown for the part period that we've been running in that last financial year. So going forward, we would have a clear year of our Back at Isa facility alone, with the profit and loss and the balance sheet based on that facility alone, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, one of the things that's disappointing is we've, we've got back the Civic Centre, but, you know, there's just so many things that needed general maintenance that wasn't addressed, you know, the lift for one, you know, which is really disappointing, that, that, that was, been left out of commission for so long. And there's just been quite a few things that, you know, the PA system...
Yeah, I agree, Madam Mayor. We raised quite a few items at different times, but it, it's really up to the willingness of the council at the time to, you know, to spend that sort of money on the Civic Centre, because a lot of the money is required to, particularly a building like the Civic Centre, is required to be done, and it's not really a, what you'd say is a, something that you would see in a lot of things like, you know, air conditioning and floorboard replacement and upgrade of change rooms, and all those things, curtains, things like that, that don't really make the, you know, they're not that exciting, you know, in terms of being able to spend that, a massive amount of money that a building like that needs. So consequently, a lot of maintenance was delayed, and for one reason and another, probably budgets or other priorities. And yeah, so basically the, the operation at MIKO, you know, persisted with being able to work with what we had at the time.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess, you know, have we got enough money in the budget? Because we, we pretty much need to stagger this, don't we? Because the, you know, I've been to events where the power's just tripped, you know, and we've had to, you know, so we probably need a whole new electricity board. Yeah. Yep. So there might be some, you know, thing, things like that, because that, that would be really great to have a backup generator, because we do use, the Civic Centre is, you know, looked at as one of the places. If there is a significant weather event, we may put people who evacuated into the Civic Centre. Oh, yeah, go. Sorry, Chad.
I was just going to add, through the chair, following the handover of Buchanan Park and Civic back to council, Stephen's team and my team are working on a proactive maintenance plan for both buildings. So council will see that, well, it'll be this financial year at some point, but to give some certainty that we've got it under control, and we're coming up with a, a plan to get all that maintenance back in track.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and look, the, the lift has to be a priority, you know. We, we wanted to have the seniors' High Tea at the Civic Centre, and we can't do that without a lift, you know, so that, and that, I don't know how long that's been out, but it's been over a year, maybe two, 80 months, two years? It's a long time.
The lift still goes to the stack, doesn't it?
No, it just doesn't work at all.
Not the one from the ground to the stack?
No. So, yeah, so, so on the, when we had the morning tea for 100 years, we had to get a bus, and we had to drive them, the seniors round to the back.
But that's the stack, that's the lift down to the...
It just doesn't work at all.
Oh, is it the same way?
Yeah. I think there's a butler's lift, I don't know if that works.
I'm referring to that one, where you take chairs up and down.
I think that one's still working, is that right?
It's only a small lift, though.
I'm taking stacks of chairs up and down. I'm just thinking if someone needed a lift that could be on time.
Yeah, I think, I think it has to come in, we have to budget for it, you know, and we need to stagger it, because we can't spend five million on it in one year. So we need to, all right. Okay, so... If there's no more comments, all those in favour? Thank you, deputy mayor, and that's carried.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so then the, brings us to the next one, which is the expression of interest to host the 2024 North Queensland Sports Star Awards. Can I get councillor to move a motion, please?
I'd like to move that council approved hosting the 2024 NQ Sports Star Gala night at the Mount Isa Civic Centre, and that council allocate funds in the 2024/25 financial year budget for the event.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Colquitt.
Thank you, councillor Colquitt. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on this?
Um, yes, I, I know we're asking to put money aside in the budget, but we're actually hoping to go out and find sponsorship for the event. I think it'll be great to have this in Mount Isa, so our sports people can attend, because lots, you know, every year they have to drive all the way over to the coast to, to get to this event, with 100 year of the, years of the mines next year also. We'll tie in nicely with that, so yeah, I'd like to commend the motion.
Would someone else like to speak on behalf of this?
Yeah, just as a backup on that one, like I know they come here for the night, but I think it's a great chance. When you usually put a big event on in Mount Isa, make it like a two or three-day event, like get them to do something on the Friday, especially to have a look at, I mean, even if it's a golf day, or a bowling day, or something like that, just so that they can see what our facilities are like, and get all the local people involved. I think it's a great initiative, and yeah, we should all really get behind it.
Thank you, councillor Colquitt. And if we're still around, I'll put you on the committee.
What I will say is that what we need to think about is we've got Bonza. So you'll find that people will be flying in on Friday about four o'clock, and leaving on Tuesday. So that, you know, maybe think about that, you know, because that, that would be very cheap airfares for people coming, I don't know if they come, do we, is it just North Queensland?
It's North Queensland.
Okay.
Maybe we might get someone to, councillor Colquitt, Gold Coast? Or you could get a guest.
We might be able to get some special guests from the Gold Coast.
Is it Friday they're flying in?
Friday, they're flying in and out, and Tuesday they're flying in and out.
That's good.
Yep, so that would be handy if they were coming from there.
When does that start, fourth?
Is it the 9th, is it?
9th of December.
I thought it was the first Tuesday in, in December. Yeah, so that, that'll be, they've already done a trial flight, which is exciting. Councillor Tully, we're just discussing the North Queensland Sports Star Awards, and do you have any questions or comments on that one before we vote? Okay, so if no one, everyone's happy, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to the Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report for September and October for 23, and I'll hand it over to councillor Stratten.
Your recommendation there, Madam Mayor, council receives and accepts the September 2023 and October 2023 Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you.
Yeah, the past, a bit operational overview, environmental services and biosecurity process, the total of 181 service requests, searches, inquiries, and complaints between September 2023 and October 2023. Environmental Services has issued all eligible businesses, including caravan, and camping, mobile vans, sporting canteens, fixed food premises, women's pools, high-risk personal appearance, and ERA with a licence, and has completed the invoice generating process and have been sent to all licensees to make the payment accordingly. Four temporary food stall licences were issued for the multicultural festival, and inspections were conducted by environmental health officers during the event. Annual inspections for home-based food businesses has begun, and will run through until November 2023. Three mobile food licences were issued across September and October 2023. That just about sums it up. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And any comments on this, councillors? All right, there's no comments? All those in favour? And that's carried.
Oh, yes.
So now it takes us to 13.7, which is the Development and Land Use Quarter Update, and is this councillor...
I'll move the resolution, thank you, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the Development and Land Use Quarter One update.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Stratten. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, thank you. Chair, I'll just go through the overview and the major development applications received. Of note, there's a development application, or change application to extend APA's existing Dougal River solar farm, will increase the generating, generating capacity of the solar farm by 77 megawatts, and create approximately 450 jobs during peak construction. There's also a development application for material change of use for a new service station at 97 to 101 Marion Street and 113 Cookabar Street. It's a new 24-hour Liberty Service Station, capacity for nine new fuel bousers, and there's also capacity for heavy and light vehicle traffic through that service station, and the service station stop and ancillary on-site dining is also proposed. There is the other development application for operational works and a proposed government housing, employee housing of 30 single-bedroom units posed and 10 double-story triplexes, and significant on-site parking and landscaping is also proposed for that development.
Any comments here? Any com- um, comments here, councillors?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd just like to, um, it ties in with the report before as well as with, um, to do with real estate. Now that we've gone to the different, um, the different way of getting rid of rubbish, showing our licence and all that, I have had a few queries from people how it's going to work with Mount Isa's transient population for people that do want to do the right thing because they sometimes don't change their licence, but they are here for an extended period. Would there be any chance that, um, maybe the people from Mount Isa City Council could meet, uh, together as a whole with all the real estates in Mount Isa to come up with a solution for this? Because they're the ones that are dealing with renters on a daily basis, so surely they might have some idea on how they can, you know, get people, encourage people to do the right thing that are coming in new to the city? Because i- it's not gonna work for for people who don't change their licence.
Well, my understanding is that, if you're living in a place, you've got to change your licence within six weeks or three months or something, I'm not sure of the exact...
Yeah, I I do understand that, but a lot of people, like, don't do that. Um, I just want them to be able to have the chance to get rid of rubbish if they want to. So I'm just sort of saying if if council could sit down and talk with the real estates, we might be able to come up with some sort of solution because they're the ones dealing with them all the time. And I don't know what the solution is, but all I all I would like to see is people in Mount Isa, um, have the opportunity because we've got such a big problem with the illegal dumping that we need to cover all our bases on this one.
I I think we're, I'm stepping our boundary where you start sitting down with real estates, but but...
No, it's been done before, Madam Mayor. Like, like, I know in in past, we have sat down and talked with them and it it's, all it's doing is trying to solve a problem. It's no good us trying to sell it, solve the problem on our own because we don't deal with with renters all the time. They do it on a daily basis.
But but it is, it's a law, you have to change your licence to your current address and if you're...
Yeah, I I understand all that, but if we don't look at something...
So you want us to sit down with a real estate?
With all of them together, it's it's not a problem.
And look at how we get them to change their driver's licences.
No, no, that's not what I said. I said we need, we need some sort of, um, procedure for people that maybe they're only here for twelve months, so then, I I don't know, they might be here for only six months, but they want to do the right thing, they want to go out and dump rubbish. So if they show their licence, they've got to pay. We want to encourage people to be able to go out to the dump and be able to dump rubbish at no cost to themselves.
Absolutely, but it's not, we, they have to change their licence even if they're there for six months.
Yeah, all I'm saying is...
What 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 the the real estates could do is say to them, if we're, if we are renting to you, it's our expectation that you put your, um, you know, your your current address on your driver's, I don't know, it's...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You you you're asking us to accommodate to people who aren't doing the right thing because it's such an illegal requirement by the police.
I'm not worried about that, I'm just worried about the illegal dumping going up because people will crack the shits, basically, and go and dump it somewhere else.
But also, you can bring your electricity bill that's got Kim Coghlan, your address on it, that you can take that, as long as you've got proof of your address. So you could take your electricity bill, you take, um, I don't know, what whatever you've got with your name and address on it.
No worries. Okay. It's just a suggestion, that's all.
I I think we haven't, we haven't even started this new, you know, I'm I'm not saying...
I think we have started it.
No, I'm saying, sorry, you're just cutting me off. What I'm saying is we've only, we're only just rolling this out, so you're already premeditating that we have or we we it won't work, and I'm just saying...
I'm not premeditating it. It, these issues were brought up when it when it even first got put to us as councillors. It was brought up then.
Yeah, but tha- that's why we we've sort of said in the media, it doesn't have to be your driver's licence, it can be electricity bill, it can be rates bill, it can be something that shows that you've got your address, uh, your name to that address, you know? So if you're paying an electricity bill, which, you know, and and maybe, uh, if you're not on the electricity bill and that you, maybe it is time to change your licence over. This could really help encourage people to change their licences over as well. But, um, it's, it's not my, it's, you know, obviously, it's just not my opinion, it's everybody's opinion. I I personally don't think that that's a, it's a, we should be taking that step right at this point because you're actually trying to come up with another solution that we've already agreed to, you know, with the, um, we've taken stuff to the dump.
Yeah, but we do know there is going to be problems, so I'm just, all I was doing was asking if we could sit down with the real estates and see if they could give us some idea on on a way to help, that's all. That's fine.
Yeah, and look, in the past, they've asked for us to give them the tip tokens, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting to meet with them to see if there's another way we can come up with a solution.
At the end of the day, we still need them to, um, prove who they are and where they live. And the, and we can't let another third party distribute things on behalf of us. I just don't think that would be, I don't know what you guys think, but I don't think that'd be appropriate, you know? And not everyone actually rents through a real estate, some people just rent off privately as well. There's a lot of people who rent privately and do it and do their own rental agreements. So then you lose them as well if you come up with another idea. But, uh, you know what? If if they, if the real estates want to get together and come up with some solutions and then meet with council, that's probably the better way to do it.
I feel that it might be a bit proactive, us reaching out to them since we're the ones that changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but to be honest...
Eh? Yeah, I'm awake here.
Sorry, councillor Bowick, you've turned your mute off there, mate.
Uh, sorry, I did want to, uh, is that conversation finished?
Yes, it is.
I just had, I just had, I just had an item on the, um, agenda, if I can.
Oh, we just, we haven't finished with this report, we're still on this report.
Okay, okay.
All right. Um, just wanted to, um, highlight the, um, Nineteenth Avenue and Brilliant Street, and, uh, I've been quite, um, transparent with, um, the fact that I, um, don't think it's a great idea to build thirty single bedroom units in a education precinct of, um, two, two primary schools and three kindies and also blocking off entrance to the Mills and Wheels. Um, what the state government have done is they came to Mount Isa and they gave, uh, some of the key stakeholders an opportunity to have a, uh, their say, and they are committing to giving Mount Isa City Council, although we haven't sent the money yet, a million dolla... Oh, is it? Okay. All right, well, um, I won't...
We got a report coming on on that?
Yes. Yes, we do, and, um, this is just, uh, should have been discussion around the, uh, recommendation that I made.
Oh, well, I just want to, um...
Well, yeah, th- this is for the...
I'll continue on, councillor. Um, I just want to highlight again that, um, you know, I do have a petition out and I I am still very, um, whatever benefits we get, I'm still very much against this project and the the the, um, location of it. And, uh, to me, it it is something that is going to haunt every one of you, if, um, and and I guarantee that because this is, this is not for Mount Isa community, it is for people who come here to fly and fly out, and it is impacting on our education area where we as residents live and we should be able to, um, you know, expect housing for families in that area, and that's just my thoughts.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this report?
As a point on that, on your discussion around that, um, development application, um, that development application gets processed by our council, but we don't have any control over it because it's state land. I think that's a point that's, um, missing in in your statement.
Uh, can I answer that? The the other thing was that when when they did come to council...
I haven't finished.
Oh, sorry, councillor. So what what was your point, first point?
So that development application that was reported...
Came to council?
It's over state land, and state has the the right to develop on their land, and council, and your statement said it'll come back to haunt us. We didn't have, uh, an option to vote on it as a council. Okay, so, uh, it's taken out of their hands because it was a state land development. And, uh, your your...
Sorry, I'll let you continue.
...come back to haunt us is, um, a little bit, uh, vindictive against council because...
Oh, don't put words into my mouth, councillor, I'll caution you now, I didn't say anything like to that, I I I made a statement, please don't, don't...
I don't think it'll come back to haunt us.
Don't put into words what you think the intention of my statement is because you don't know, okay, councillor? I'll caution you on that.
All right.
With the development to council, this came to coun...
It won't come back to haunt us because it's a state development, it's not a council development.
Thank you, and I'm, I want to take your points seriously, I want to take your points seriously. So this development came to council, it didn't come to councillors, and I know two of the people in the room had conflicts of interest with this and shouldn't have been in the room, so that, to me, that, I I've highlighted that with the state government, absolutely.
Who?
You need to explain.
I can explain this offline, obviously, this is not appropriate time to explain it here, but...
You brought it up.
We brought it up.
Uh, I don't need, I caution you, we're in a meeting, I'm speaking, don't speak over me, councillor, councillor! Please don't speak over me, I'm speaking, are you speaking over, can you apologise now or leave the meeting? Apologise now or leave the meeting, I'm not going to be spoken to, uh, spoken over.
I'm not apologising.
Will will you let me finish speaking?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, so the development application, there's definitely two people in the room that, um, one was on a board where the, um, the, where who, the, um, building is going to house those residents. The other owned land in that street. It was probably unintentional, but it was still conflicts of interest that I'm not comfortable with, it was never raised to councillors, that's my issue, I've raised it with the state government. I have been advocating for this, um, location to be changed, and all of you have been very vocal that you're very comfortable, including the deputy mayor, with this, um, building site, and in fact, you think it's going to be fantastic, and I, there's, there's quotes of you saying this, so I'm pretty sure you stand behind that. So, again, councillor, I'm just pointing that out, I never said you voted for it, but definitely advocated, so, um, I'm hap- happy to take your comments seriously. All right.
So who's the conflict?
I just said, there was someone on the board of, um, of, uh, of people who are gonna, of the government agency that's actually gonna be putting people in there.
So was there an organisation in your involvement that is against it?
No, is there an organ... No, no, councillor? No, do you know of an organisation I'm involved in that's against it?
A simple yes or no, it's all...
Are you talking about councillors or staff?
I'm not talking about councillors.
So you're talking about...
You're not talking about councillors?
No.
Well, why did you say we'd come back to haunt us? I'm not even linking this logic.
All right, sorry, I I may not have articulated this correctly. Councillors have sets, don't talk over me, councillor, please, I'm 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 getting a, it's it's hard to talk and put my point across when you want to interrupt me, right? This is not in standard with, um, our standard of meeting, um, procedures. Councillor, this is the second time or third time you've done that?
Yeah.
All right, I'm answering your question, councillor McCrae. The council have advocated and and spoke for this project very vocally, and not, they've not only done it in the council, they've done it actually when they've met with stakeholders. Um, I'm not, that's the point I made.
But you've spoken against it, so why can't we speak for it?
You absolutely can speak for it, and I'm not saying you can't.
Come back and haunt us.
I I believe the community don't want it. I I think, I I, the people I talk to, uh, don't want it, so...
Speak for me.
We have spoken about this, so unless you can't remember, we've, we've, we've talked about this in a a couple of meetings.
Look, I I did...
And maybe you weren't present, but we've definitely spoken about it as a council. In fact, it got quite, quite, um, passionate, let's just say. Councillor Coghlan?
I'm I'm very happy with this development going through because I know it's going to be very well used, it's in a great location, and, um, I did express all the positives on it to the two state members that come up and spoke to the group, I had a meeting with them.
But you didn't articulate your positives to me. What were your positives?
Well, I have.
No, not, at any point, you've just said this is a great project, you've never articulated why.
Well, it's in, it's, it's in a very good area, that land's just been like that for years and years. Um, it's close to a park, it will attract people to Mount Isa, um, it's in a safe area, I know that Queensland Health...
You're you're talking about the positives for Queensland Health, but what's a positive for our community?
Because then we can get nurses...
Because Queensland Health are actually bringing...
Don't talk over me.
Sorry, good point.
Don't talk over me.
But, um...
Because then, at least, we can get nurses, doctors, teachers, firemen, all them to come here to Mount Isa, live somewhere nice and hopefully stay, and...
Where are they going to stay, councillor?
In the units.
So they're going to bring their family to a one-bedroom unit in a complex where there's no room for children?
Well, I think if, they're not all one-bedroom, there are some two-bedroom...
They absolutely are all one-bedroom, I'll send you the plans, every single one of them is...
I think you might have to check on that, Madam Mayor, because that could have changed.
Well, what what information have you got?
Well, it it could have changed, like, you never know.
It hasn't changed.
Well, they might have taken on board what people said, I'm not too sure, but even, even if it's...
Where are you getting your information from? Because it hasn't come through councillor.
Even if it's a one-bedroom unit...
No, it is a one-bedroom unit.
Well, it doesn't matter, those people are still coming to Mount Isa, they're living in good accommodation, they're going to feel safe and they will stay. And I I don't see the problem, it's not going to hurt traffic because you haven't got thirty people leaving at eight o'clock in the morning and thirty people coming in at two-thirty at night. It hasn't blocked off the access to the, um, Mills on Wheels because they have got a front entrance and they have got, people can walk in there, so it doesn't interfere with parking for the cricket because all the cricketers usually park on the road. And I do know this because I have to drive past there about three times a day.
I think you came to the second engagement, but you didn't come to the first engagement, and we did it at Mills and Wheels, and they showed us how that they needed that truck to come in from the entrance where it's going to be blocked off.
But why can't that truck be like everyone else and walk it in? They do it in through the CBD.
Because the people who have to walk it in, and the truck drivers don't have to to unload their trucks, by the way, are people in their sixties and seventies and eighties who just can't carry the the heavy food that 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 that's delivered.
Two points of information.
But can I just, no, no, councillor, I'm I'm just answering councillor Coghlan's, I've waited a long time for her to finish her queries. You you gave a lot of good, um, you articulated a lot of good points for Queensland Health and to other state government agencies that are going to use them for their fly and fly out staff. But you 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 made the assumption that these people would come in as fly and fly out, fly and fly out and maybe stay as families, but they still haven't resolved where they're going to move with their families. And and I can tell you now, these are definitely one-bedroom units, I've seen the plans, they're the the only ones we've approved as a a council. If they've changed the plans, they haven't put it through Mount Isa City Council. So I guarantee you, they're still one-bedroom, and they're also, um, a second story, so you'll you park your car underneath the unit, so anyone with a disability isn't going to be able to use them as well, not that that's my problem, but...
Well, they wouldn't put them in there. If if they've got a disability, they wouldn't put them in there.
What I'm trying to say is, um, in ten years or fifteen years when the these house, this complex may be up for sale, it is going to be very limited who can live there. Families won't be able to live there, I guarantee it because there there's there's nowhere for a family to go, so they, they'll never, those thirty people will never use the two schools, the three kindies, it is just out of the question.
But Madam Mayor, you don't know that.
I'm just finishing what I'm, can I...
You're, you're making all these assumptions, and I'm not, I'm not actually worried about in fifteen years' time. I'm worried about now because we can't get staff in a lot of our government agencies because we haven't got good, safe accommodation. I'm worried about now because we can't get staff in a lot of our government agencies because we haven't got good, safe accommodation.
Let me finish, um, and I, I, I'm not dismissing your point, but you just aren't articulating why it's good for Mount Isa. You're, you're saying why it's good for, um, the government agencies who need staff quickly. It's not resolving our accommodation issues where we need accommodation for families. Now, those firefighters, those nursing staff, the doctors, we want them to come here with their families. We're not addressing that, we're not building thirty houses for them to move into later. That is my concern. If they're going to spend millions and millions of dollars at the moment building this complex, they should just, we have a, a suburb that is, we just need them to commit to building thirty houses there. And they could be one bedroom, two bedroom, four bedroom houses. They need to, um, have a mixture because yes, you'll have a single person come, but you'll also have a young family want to come here. Um, this is not conducive to, um, helping us address a workforce that can live in Mount Isa. This is a quick fix for a shortage of accommodation for services. I've been in here since twenty twenty and every time I've met with a minister or governor official, I tell them, we need to build in our new suburb because you guys haven't got enough accommodation. And it's not good enough that in the fourth year of our term they've suddenly realised that because we've been telling them for four years. We do need accommodation that will bring people here to live, bring their families, we need kids in school, we absolutely need kids in school.
Yeah, hang on a minute, can, can you just, can you?
I'll wrap it up for you.
Wrap it up please.
But, but please articulate why it's good for Mount Isa, not good for the government.
Why it's good for Mount Isa, and I know personally, you get single people here. The races, all the cafes, everything, our young people come here, they come here for one or two years. If they're happy, in good accommodation, they feel safe, they actually meet other people. They stay here for five years, they stay here for ten years, they buy a house, they start their family here. I see it all the time with the teachers, with nurses, with fireys, with police, it happens all the time. They come as single people because Mount Isa offers so much for single people to do. But they meet, many romancers have been, been made in Mount Isa. So they go on to then hopefully buying a house. What's wrong with a heap of single people here coming here for two years, five years, ten years?
Nothing, but you've changed the conversation and you haven't articulated again, I'm talking about the location and the style of units. You're not articulating why it has to be that location, you think it's great, but that location has two primary schools and three kindies, we want families there.
No, no, hang on a minute, so you're saying all the people that come in there, hang on a minute. You've got hundred metres down the road at the Irish Club, you've got fly-in, fly-out workers. What, do you think they're all mass murderers or something? Like what's, what's wrong with having single people staying there?
Okay.
Answer me that.
I'm absolutely guarantee you, you're going to guarantee you're not going to cut me off halfway through because councillor, if you do, I'll ask you to apologise and I'll ask you to leave the room.
I'm not apologising to you for anything.
All right then, leave the room please councillor.
No.
I'm asking you to apologise if you want to stay in the room, otherwise just leave the room.
I'm not apologising because I've got nothing to apologise for.
Just way speaking to me now, it, it, it is absolutely a, a, a breach of our meeting policy, it's a breach of our code of conduct. It is absolutely, well, I'm not going on until you do something councillor.
No, well, I'm sitting here.
Okay, let's sit in silence.
So through the chair that-
No, no councillor, um, I said sit in silence, councillor, you've got a choice, apologise for your conduct or leave the room. But there's nothing wrong with my conduct. I've asked you many times to stop speaking over me and the, and the way you speak to me, and it's not just in this meeting, it's a lot of meetings councillor. If you resent me, that's fine, I don't like some of the things you say either, but I don't talk to you the way you talk to me. So just remember you're a councillor in this room, you're not Kim Coghlan, you're a councillor and you have to abide by certain rules that we, and policies that we all agree on and vote for. So all I'm asking of you is just to apologise for your conduct and let's move on.
No, I'm not apologising, I haven't done anything wrong, that's just your opinion. If you want to do anything about it, you put in an OIA complaint.
I'm a chair of this committee and I'm asking you to apologise or move on.
No, I'm not apologising because I haven't done anything wrong.
You talked over me-
You just don't like me.
It's not true councillor, I, I, councillor, I heard what you say about me, don't worry, everyone tells me what you say about me.
I'll hold my hand up for five minutes.
All right, well councillor, councillor McCrae, I'll come to you as soon as the councillor apologises because it, it's just not fair what you do.
No, I'm not apologising, I haven't done anything wrong.
You breached the, the meeting conduct where I was speaking and you deliberately spoke over me when I asked you to stop doing it. You said, no, I'm going to continue and you've done that a couple of times and I let you get away with it, no other councillor does that. Just apologise and let's move on.
No.
You don't apologise for your conduct, well then I'm asking you to leave the council meeting immediately.
No, I'm not, I haven't done anything wrong.
I'm asking you to leave the council meeting, please put it-
I haven't done anything wrong.
Leave the council meeting and you can put an OIA in later.
I don't put OIA's in or whatever they're called.
Do what you like councillor, but I'm asking you to leave the meeting.
No. You can adjourn and get some legal advice.
No, no, I'm not adjourning, I'm asking you to leave the meeting now.
No, I'm not leaving, I haven't done anything wrong madam mayor.
You breached the, um, meeting-
I didn't breach anything. It was a discussion.
It wasn't discussion, it was you trying to cut me off and have your opinion over me and I actually said to you I'd give you opportunity, which I did many times.
No.
Well, I think it's probably fair to say that, I mean, everyone's doing it, so I'm in for, I can't understand why you're targeting Kim Coghlan.
Well, she's, you know what, I'm not targeting Kim, but she said, she, councillor. I really want to say that, um, I have every right to ask her to apologise and I have every right to ask her to leave a meeting. I have. You yourself, were almost asked to apologise yourself and-
And you can, you can ask me to do whatever, um, you can ask me to handstand if you want, but whether I do it or not is my, is my choice.
Can we please just get on with the meeting?
No, councillor, I've asked you to apologise, just apologise for your conduct and let's move on.
No, I haven't got anything to apologise for.
You breached the meeting policy.
No, I didn't.
Absolutely you did. And look, I, I gave you many opportunities to speak and I was just asking you to articulate what you're, and, and you kept changing the answer to not suit what I asked you to talk about. This discussion obviously isn't working because you have a completely different, um, side to what I do. But we can still have it without being rude to each other. Now, I know you don't like me, that's fine, but just treat me a, as, as part of our code of conduct, okay? That's all you have to do.
Which I do, I haven't done anything wrong, I'm not apologising, it was a discussion and I'd like to move on.
All right, um, if the time's eleven seventeen AM, I'm going to adjourn this council meeting.
Thanks, Mr CEO.
It's eleven twenty-nine a m and we are reconvening the meeting. I'd just like to start off by saying that we are all elected here to represent Mount Isa and I appreciate people's passion for different things, but we need to conduct ourselves as per our policies and at times, as a chair, I give a lot of leeway for discussion, which is a lot more than other councillors do, councillors do. But I do want this to go ahead and I do want it to go in order, but if that doesn't happen, I'm quite capable of adjuting this meeting until another date where we can get legal and also appropriate advice. But I'll hand over to you now councillor Coglan, it's the boards and your court.
If you think I need to apologise, Madam Mayor, I apologise.
Thank you. And I'm not going to go on any more than then, let's move on and let's have a productive rest of the meeting.
Through the chair, I had my hand up for about five minutes waiting to speak.
Thank you councillor McCrae, would you like to speak?
Thank you. I just wanted to go back on a point you made about Wheels on Meals on Wheels, from my understanding with what the department presented and what our director presented, that there was like a way for the trucks to come in and still be able to deliver Meals on Wheels. All the deliveries that come to my business, the truck drivers actually bring milk and whatever I need, they actually bring it into the premises, so I'm sure it will be the same organisations delivering to Meals on Wheels, so I'm sure they will get the same treatment.
Can I just answer that one that they're saying that doesn't happen? So just let me finish, let me answer that one, because you, by the time you, if when you put five things forward, I forget what the first one was, but I have sat down with Meals on Wheels and so has Tim, and they're saying that doesn't happen. They're saying they have to pull out the goods themselves for whatever reason, so maybe they need to change to your truck driver, but I do know a friend who's a truck driver and he doesn't unload himself either, so it just probably depends on the company you're dealing with. Happy to go to your next point.
Thank you. Singles, like I think we're, we welcome singles and couples, one bedroom unit accommodate couples as well. I came here myself as a single teacher in ninety-seven and had to move into a house in Darling Crescent with four other teachers. I don't think young people are prepared to do that, so I think having lovely housing that is secure will attract young people to come out and yes, they may, you know, develop relationships and stay in the community, so I think that's a great starting point in attracting young people, because really that's the future of our town and our target market, so.
And can I just comment on that point? Absolutely, we welcome everyone, singles, couples, families, extended families, Mount Isa welcomes everybody, so that's, I agree on that point.
Okay. Also, you raise conflict of interest and you're concerned that it's going to be fly-in, fly-out. I'm just wondering yourself, if you have a conflict of interest in your chair of the board of another establishment two hundred metres up the road that has fly-in, fly-out, so if that's your concern, maybe you need to declare that.
Absolutely not. So thank you for your concern though, but no, that is actually accommodation that people can book on a nightly basis. This is actually going to be a state government agency that oversees the entire facility and different organisations will be putting in people who, one, do live here, two, do fly-in and fly-out, and they'll have that as on a permanent basis as part of their roster. So, which is a little different to a motel style accommodation, but that's, I take your point.
So the Irish Club isn't a fly-in, fly-out accommodation?
No, no, it's there for anybody, you can book it yourself. And please ring up and book a night's accommodation, you're more than welcome to. Well, I know people who do and there are lots and lots of hotels that do have people who come in for business, they just do. Look, I'm not, I'm not debating fly-in, fly-out accommodation, I'm saying that I want to see accommodation in that location, and this is what we're talking about, we're not talking about fly-in, fly-out in general, so I don't know why you, I'm saying there's two primary schools, I'm talking police councillor, I'm saying there's two primary schools, three Kindies and a Meals on Wheels that are going to be impacted by this location. So far, no-one's articulated why that location's a good place, because if you put those thirty units somewhere else, it probably wouldn't have been such a big issue for me. So that's, that's my point.
Okay, so.
So the point was never fly-in, fly-out, but it was about the location. Councillor, yes, Fortune?
That location is state land and as such.
It used to be council land there, didn't it, and we swapped it.
So that location is state land, state can build whatever they like on there, and I guess within reason they have, and the development application's gotten to this point. I think it's been pretty clearly articulated what benefit is to Mount Isa.
It hasn't.
Pretty clearly, and.
The question was, what, the location, what is the benefit of having it there? And there was a lot of benefits to the state government, but you didn't mention Mount Isa and that's what, that's my priority, is Mount Isa.
For sure, and as, as all these councillors are as well, I'm sure. The benefit with police, ambulance, nurses being able to be accommodated, teachers being able to be accommodated and brand new, you know, accommodation, safe accommodation in a good area, that is state controlled.
Right, has everyone felt like they had their say?
I've been waiting for a while.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's all right. Look, I, I had a look at that table there within that town planning and that, I think that's a great set of developments that's happening and I think we all, we all ought to be very, very supportive of and encourage this development. As for Nineteenth Avenue, I think that's going to be really something over there when that development's complete and I think you'll be very, very surprised at what that area can become, rather than just a dirt car park. But however, I did have a question just on the first item there, it says it's a Dougal River solar farm, but I'm not sure that's, is that correct? Does anybody know? I think it'd be more the Diamond Tina.
I think it may be just a typo through the chair, that's Moran Road off Diamond Tina Development Road.
Yeah, it shouldn't be called Dougal River, I wouldn't imagine.
No, I don't think it would be, but it's the, it's the solar farm because the Dougal River.
That's a good pick-up there, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so I just, I just thought I'd mention that, but look, just looking through all those developments, I think with the Barclay development and the garage going to twenty-four seven, the units in Nineteenth Avenue, I think that's a real shot in the arm for Mount Isa and those things will just add to the livability everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, sorry councillor Fortune, he just can't hear.
Yeah, that's fine, I think the director might have an answer to that.
Just to clarify through the chair, so the solar farm is an expansion of the APA farm on Micah Creek Road. The reference to Dougal River is that there's a take-off agreement for that solar farm, so the power is sold to the Dougal River mine.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Chad. Okay, well without further ado, all those in favour? Deputy Mayor? And that's Carrie.
Yes, Bowick.
Okay, so that takes us now to item fourteen, which is the infrastructure services reports, fourteen point one, which is works and operations overview report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? I think that might be councillor Tully.
Thank you Madam Mayor, the council receive and accepts the November twenty-twenty-three works and operations report.
Can I go seconded for that motion?
Okay.
Thank you councillor Streton. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you. Just an overview, during September and October, council staff readyed the grounds of Buchanan Park for upcoming events, inspected council roads, continued with the management of the six DRFA packages, batch plant, carried out some road and shoulder repairs on the unsealed council roads, and there's a few other things there, but I'd just like to thank the people that were involved in the fires and, you know, that helped the mines, the council, the people like Madam Mayor, you know, alluded to previously, I'd just like to thank them and, you know, I'm sure the whole town's pretty proud of what, what was achieved by all the people involved.
Absolutely, and even the assistant commissioner commented on how wonderful it was to see a city, a community unite to support not just the neighbours, but also support QFES and emergency services, so yeah, it was lovely to hear that sort of feedback. Any other comments on this one councillors? All right, all those in favour?
Yes, Bowick.
Thank you, that's Carrie. That takes us now to waste management overview report for September and October twenty-three and I'll hand over to councillor Streton.
Recommendation there is council receives the waste management overview report, September and October twenty-twenty-three, and notes that work being undertaken to address various issues.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Councillor Streton, you want to speak on behalf of this one?
Just a bit of an overview there Madam Mayor, waste amateur days, we're in November, very well uptake there, stockpiles of various materials that the Mount Isa Waste Management Facilities are ongoing problem, that needs to be addressed, the stockpiles have been allowed to grow for some years, and the Department of Environmental Science, DES, has expressed question whether the stockpiles are being maintained merely to avoid the waste levy. So yeah, council are working heavily on that at the moment, trying to sort that mess out.
Thank you. Are we going to feedback on how the amnesty days went?
Stephen, Amnesty Day, just a quick.
How did the amnesty days went?
From all reports, very well, they were well attended, we got, as I said in the report there, we got bins and a hook lift truck for both days from J J Richards, expecting a lot of rubbish to come in and the way it's normally done is quite satisfactory for the dribs and drabs of people who come in sort of on your average day, but with a fairly intense day like that, we thought it would get overwhelmed and speaking to staff in previous years, it has been overwhelmed, they start to, big piles of waste in the middle of an open area, which unfortunately we don't have because of the MRF, but it's probably pretty bad practice anyway, then they spend the rest of the week cleaning it all up and taking it to the tip, so with the, the bins and the hook truck, it was able to be put in there and conveyed straight to the tip without double handling or anything. And in fact, that's what their transfer station was designed to do, but for some reason, never implemented.
Just through the chair, next year when this is done, I think we need to do a little bit more publicity on it, Facebook has to be continually put with it, but we also need to look at doing some radio, radio media on it, you know, just a slight ad to say that on these days, we're having that, just to get it out even wider in the community.
Yeah, and you know, could we look at doing some more radio stuff, because people don't know the seniors high tiers on, they're just not getting the message out there for whatever reason, and there's more and more people not on Facebook these days as well, or not on it like they used to be, so I don't know if there's a way to.
No.
Yeah, I know in the past, council used to do it, so maybe it's just a way of letting people know so they don't miss out.
Through the chair, just a question I guess to the director, I mean, are there like, the ability for council in the future to, to possibly process the green waste stockpile for use for, you know, compost, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I think we've been getting, Stephen, you're looking at getting a couple of quotes just to see where we're at.
Yeah, just trying to finalise that, fairly expensive, very big piles, we'll try and do it more regularly in future and the, and we'll reuse it around the site, so it'll be mulched and put wherever it makes sense to put it, to make some sort of constructive use out of it. In future, it might be able to be made available to public, there's plenty of facilities that mulch it and allow people to take free mulch and that's pretty good use too. It's very contaminated because people tip whatever's in the trailer on the green waste, including timber and concrete and other things, so that's going to greatly increase the cost of the processing, so also in future, once we get this cleaned up, we'll try and be a little bit more diligent with ensuring that we get the waste separated and then it'll be able to be offered to people for mulch. This will be fairly dirty mulch.
There are machines on the market that depending on what implement you put into the machine can do concrete tyres, green waste, tree trunks, things like that. It's a cost to council and having the personnel to operate a device like that, but there's a possibility that that can be looked into in the future, and also the possibility that the concrete might be able to go off-site too as well and be crushed off-site for people using fill. I'll speak to the CEO and the director later on that possibility.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favour? And that's Carrie, Deputy Mayor? Yep. And then that takes us now to general business, which is nil, which will lead us straight into confidential, so we may just continue on, I will move into confidential, so I'd just like to thank anyone who has tuned in at home and we are now going to be moving into our confidential section of the council. Okay, so I'd like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation twenty-twelve. Sixteen point one, financial year twenty-three, twenty-four, quarter one budget review, this matter is considered to be confidential under the section two five four J C of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter is, an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with the local government's budget. Sixteen point two, administration, administrative pay increase, this matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J B of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that discussion on this matter is in an open meeting, in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with industrial matters affecting employees. Sixteen point three, net zero transition roadmap Mount Isa Concuri region. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J I of the local government regulation and the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with a matter, the local government is required to keep confidential under law of or formal arrangement with the Commonwealth or state. Sixteen point four, strategic support transition of Mount Isa's economy, this matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J I of the local government regulation and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter is in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with the matter that local government is required to keep confidential under the law of or formal arrangement with the Commonwealth or state. Sixteen point five, Mount Isa Race Club Inc, Stewart Towers request, this matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J G of the local government regulation and that local government is satisfied that discussion of this matter is in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to commercial matters involving local government for which the public discussion would be likely to produce the interests of the local government. Sixteen point six, request for variation centennial place construction, this matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J C of the local government regulation and that the. Regulation, and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with the local government's budget. Sixteen point seven, Brillant Street Community Purpose Car Park, this matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J G of the Local Government Regulation, and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which the public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Second.
All those in favour? Okay, um, move the motion that council moves out of closed business into open business. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Council Streton. All those in favour? And that's carried. That brings us to item sixteen point one, uh, financial year for twenty-three, twenty-four quarter, uh, quarter one, sorry, budget review. Someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, the council adopts a full year twenty-three, twenty-four, quarter one budget review for the period ending thirty September two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, a second for that motion? Thank you, Council Tully. All those in favour? Not in favour?
Are we?
Alright, so do you want your?
Yes, I want my vote recorded, I'm not in favour.
Um, sixteen point two, administrative pay increase. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the Chair, I read the recommendation, the council approves an administrative pay increase of three point two percent from the pay period commencing for December twenty twenty-three for all employees excluding those on fixed term contracts.
Thank you, Council Fortune. Can I go second for that motion? Thank you, Council Tully. All those in favour?
Are we, yes.
And that's carried. Sixteen point three, net zero transition roadmap, Manizza Concorde Region. Someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council enter into a contract in conjunction with Concorde Shire Council with the next economy to provide a net zero transition roadmap to the value of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred excluding GST, subject to confirmation of state government funding and authorise the CEO to negotiate and finalise the contractual arrangements. And that council resolve that in accordance with section two three five B of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve, the services required are specialised in nature and it does, it does not seek to invite other quotes or tenders.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, Council Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Are we?
Sixteen point four, uh, strate- strategy support, um, transition of Manizza's economy. Strategic, strategy, I can't, don't know why I'm saying that back to front. Would someone like to move the council's recommendation, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council engage the Flinders University to provide initial strategy support modules one to four to the value of one hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars excluding GST and authorise the CEO to negotiate and finalise contractual arrangements. And that council resolve that in accordance with section two three five D of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve, the services required are specialised in nature and it does not seek to invite other quotes or tenders.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, Council Tully. All those in favour?
Are we, yes.
Alright, and that's carried. Um, sixteen point five, Manizza Race Club Inc. Stewart Towers request. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, that council brings forward the lease renewal date to incorporate the survey plan into a new ten-year lease showing the acquisition of additional council-owned land. Number two, requires the registration of an access easement from the Shogran site going across the racetrack lease area, in brackets lease B, to connect the council-owned inner oval to the council-owned land on the outer oval. Number three, endorses the use of the proposed site for the purpose of obtaining a building approval and to allow funding submissions to be made by the club. Number four, requests this work desirably be completed by the first of March two thousand and twenty-four unless an extension of time is granted by the acting chief executive officer.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, Council Streton. All those in favour?
Yes, are we?
And that's carried. Um, that brings us to sixteen point six, which is a request for variation for centennial place construction. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the council increased the contract amount for the C O N dash two twenty twenty-two dash seventy-six centennial place construction contract to four million two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixteen cents excluding GST as a result of variations to two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-three and forty-nine cents excluding GST in variation works as requested.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Council Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Are we, yes.
The, um, sixteen point seven, Brilliant Street Community Purpose Car Park, um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I will, I'd like to move that council accepts the tender evaluation panel recommendation and resolve to award a contract for the, for the design and instruction of Brilliant Street Community Purpose Car Park, R M Q contract number twenty twenty-three thirty-seven to O P Construction Priority Limited for the value of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars, thirty-nine cents excluding GST substantively in terms of the contract issued with the tender and delegates authority to the chief executive officer to negotiate and finalise an A P contract. And that, council set an overall budget of one million, one hundred and ten thousand for the completion of the project.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
All those in favour? Like my?
Are we, yes.
As a what?
Um, not in favour.
Of the car park?
Yes. The car park, yes, but not that we're paying extra money.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our, um, ordinary meeting. Uh, I want to thank everybody for participating today. The time is now twelve.